Good evening and welcome to this July 12th work session of the Manhattan City Commission. Would you join me, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening is a, the work session will focus on one agenda item, but it's all the Chamber of Commerce. It's Manhattan Chamber of Commerce slash Convention and Visitors Bureau Second Quarter Update and 2023 Budget Proposals for Continued Convention and Visitors Bureau Economic Development and Military Relations Services. And the lead tonight is Jason Smith, the Director of the Manhattan Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity to kick off this evening. As, as you mentioned, we have a couple items up for consideration, including our budget request for 2023. I will say, it's not all Chamber. We have a lot of partners with us this evening, too, that you'll be hearing from as well. I'm sorry.
President and CEO, I should have said.
It's okay.
Just correcting. Or correcting.
So, the last year, last 12 months has been an incredible time for our organization. And we've had a lot of great successes that you're going to hear about tonight from a variety of people. You're also going to hear about some challenges that we face ahead as if we're going to continue the positive momentum that we built over the last 12 to 24 months. I do want to take, though, a couple of moments to say thank you to the city staff. We couldn't do any of this without their help, particularly the city manager's office. But, but anybody in any of the departments that we work with is always very, um, very helpful in, in making sure that, that we present the community in the best light possible to our clients. And, and so I do want to take a moment to say that. But I also want to take the opportunity to talk about, and you've heard me say this before, but I'm, I'm going to say it every chance I get. We have the best team, in my opinion, in the country. And I've had the opportunity to work in a lot of places, have visited a lot of people, and, and hear a lot of stories from other communities. And in between what we do in tourism and military and economic development and all of the community development initiatives, there are very few places, if any, that, that work as well as we do. And I think that's a tribute to a lot of people, but, but I also want to take this moment to credit each of you because you all have continued to invest in economic development in these programs. We are starting to see some of the dividends of that. And I think, as Darren will talk about in a little bit, you're going to continue to see dividends. And I think that, that we just have a lot of blue skies ahead of us. So, I'm not going to take a lot of time and I'm, I'm going to let, as Kent says, the smart people talk about it. But, uh, but tonight you'll hear from our economic development team and Darren Solden will get up in a minute and he'll introduce who's with him. Then following Darren, you'll have Janet Nichols, who, who runs our military relations program. And then concluding tonight's comments will be Karen Hibbert, who is the Vice President and Executive Director for our Convention and Visitors Bureau. I'll be available to answer any questions during or after. But with that, I will turn it over to Darren Solden.
Thank you, Jason. I thank you Commissioners. It's great to be here this evening. And I just want to start off by, by thanking you and letting you know that we value your continued investment in economic development. We talk a lot about programs that we're running and, and initiatives that we're engaging in. And I think we're going to have a great opportunity this evening to start talking a little bit about some of the positive impact that these efforts are having on our community and our regions. And, and that is because of your dedication and commitment to economic development in Manhattan. As Jason mentioned, we've got a couple folks that will be joining me to go through some of these economic development initiatives. First off, Rebecca Robinson, Chief Corporate Engagement and Economic Development Officer from K-State Innovation Partners, as we review some projects and their economic impact. In the entrepreneurship section, Sarah Siders, Spark Executive Director, and Doug Barrett, owner of 400 North Creative and Vice President of the Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills, are going to join us to talk a little bit about some of the initiatives that their organizations are working on. And then, as Jason mentioned, Janet Nichols will be reporting on military as our military community liaison. So we're going to run through all of that and then be happy to break for questions and comments at that time ahead of the Convention Visitors Bureau presentation. To start us off, as we've seen from us the last couple of years, we really are focusing our efforts on five key strategies. Recovery as it relates to the pandemic and the challenges that our local businesses and the economy in general went through from that. Job creation, both existing jobs as well as attracting new to the community. At the same time, talent, retaining talent, attracting talent, whether that be retaining from Fort Riley or Kansas State or attracting from elsewhere to opportunities in the Manhattan area. And then entrepreneurship and innovation. We have to find ways to grow more of our own, the next generation of our own, and leverage Kansas State University and the, and the opportunities that exist there from an entrepreneurship and innovation standpoint. So I'm going to welcome Rebecca up, and we're going to spend a few minutes talking through some projects. And you can see that list up here, again, this, over the course of the last year to year and a half, with really the last year is incredibly exciting time for economic development in our region. It's, it's great to be able to stand up here and, and talk through some projects that are in various different stages. And of course, right up at the top of that list is Scorpion Biological Services. And, and you've heard from those folks, looking at the upcoming legislative agenda, we're going to be here quite a lot over the course of the next couple of months as it relates to that project. But over 500 jobs, over $650 million of planned capital investment and really a, an incredible project for our region and, and for our state. And Rebecca, talk a little bit more why that's such a great fit for, for this community, this region, and Kansas State University.
Thank you Mayor and Commissioners. The first thing I'd want to reiterate is that our university community partnership for economic development is very strong. And not only is it evidence of the partnership that was able to land and announce Scorpion Biological Services in this community, we also know that the work doesn't end after you announce a partnership, as noted by Darren, and the, and the forthcoming partnership that we will have with the community to ensure that that project is successful. At K-State, we, um, we plan to partner, continue partnering with the company through research collaboration. Those conversations are ongoing, as well as really robust conversations around the talent pipeline that is going to be needed to fill the workforce there. That workforce doesn't exist today in this community ready to hire away. We will build it at Kansas State University and with our partners, the Manhattan Area Technical College, and are in deep conversations about building biomanufacturing workforce in those spaces. We're also working with Fort Riley, working to transition our military personnel into potential positions in the biomanufacturing space to retain those soldiers and our talent in this community, meeting nearly all of, of our economic development strategies. A number of the other projects that we've announced in the last year that also meet those goals and are reflective of that partnership that we have between the university and the community. The first is Canopy. This is a company that we actually incubated inside the university and then spun out of the university, creating private sector jobs. And now they're scaling to hopefully 15 to 20 employees. They're a software company that licenses their technology all over the country. The next company that is another evidence of that success was recently announced in May. Hydrograph Clean Power is a company that licensed a technology developed at Kansas State University. And then they're, they IPOed on the Canadian Stock Exchange and decided to locate their operations, their manufacturing in Manhattan. We just announced that in May, and in June they announced that they're operational and are ready to produce graphene for that market. This is a great example of how we can translate the research going on at K-State into local economic prosperity. That company is projecting to create over 100 jobs in the next five years. Finally, MBAF has obviously been a long-term project that the community and the university and all of our regional partners have collaborated to attract. It's been a long road and they are now at the point where construction is complete. Over the last two years, over 200 people have been onboarded, over 245 employees have been hired. And now that construction is done, now the science teams can start to make their transition and the building can be commissioned. That's really exciting from a, um, from a worker perspective because we start to bring and see some of those highly educated folks, both that we're training at K-State, others that will come from Plum Island, and others that we will attract here to our communities. I'll hand it back to Darren to talk about the rest of our projects.
Thank you Rebecca, and I just want to highlight the fact that we do have incredible partners here. Kansas State University, and it doesn't work this way in all university communities, but we're fortunate, both from a community economic development standpoint and from a university standpoint, to be so closely intertwined and work together on these projects. And it really helps us present this community and present this region incredibly well. Next, I'd like to highlight a couple of projects that, that came before this body over the course of the last few years. One's Bev Hub out at the Manhattan Business Park by the airport. That company projected 37 jobs and about $23 million worth of investment in building and equipment when they were here for an economic development incentive package. I can report that they continue to grow and have some exciting plans for the future. We've just met with them recently and we're excited to see how that continues to progress. But a great, a great entrepreneurship story. Kansas-based business, Kansas-based investors, originally a business out of Wichita, but chose Kansas as a place to grow, purchased a building here. Shows the, shows the importance of having assets in inventory when it comes to economic development sites and building assets and, and have continued to grow. So we, we look forward to a bright future from them. Prime company, another locally grown company that, that was before this body and, and continues to grow throughout the country, but, but expanding their headquarters here and, and bringing talent back or retaining talent from the university. The next two companies are both ones that are located at the, at the Manhattan Business Park. And that's a city park where we make sure that we highlight the activity that they have going on. Kansas Gas Service has added a number of folks over the last couple of years, 16 folks over the last couple of years, and continues to grow in their facility. And then Walters Morgan Construction has built their new headquarters out there at the, at the Business Park. So continued growth from, again, local, local companies with a local presence that have, have chosen to grow here at home. And then finally, the last two, Simiron Trailers and Radiation Detection Technologies. They are not ones with growth plans. They see the stars by them. They're, they're not ones, when you go to the next page and look at some impact, that their capital investment is being counted in the capital investment number because they're not, that investment is not being made within the city limits of Manhattan. But I wanted to highlight them because of the importance to the region and the fact that we anticipate, obviously, they'll have a good number of employees that would be, would be living in, in Manhattan, shopping in Manhattan, and, and having kids in the school districts here around Manhattan. And so Simiron Trailers is a Chickasha, Oklahoma, company that chose to do it. They've got about 147 employees down there. They're looking to, look to expand. They expand into this market out in the Green Valley Business Park, about 40 employees or growth potential to 40 employees over east of town in Potawatomi County. And then Radiation Detection Technologies, which is a, currently in university space. They were able to secure a, a base grant through the Kansas Department of Commerce, just under $3 million, and have some really interesting growth plans. But a high-tech manufacturing company employ almost exclusively Kansas State graduates, many of them with, with master's degrees or, or greater. And, and a great asset for our community and the type of company that we want to see continue to grow here because of its ability to retain talent in the region.
Darren, before you go on.
Yes.
An asterisk, but this is easier details. An asterisk by Simiron Trailers and Radiation Detection, but there's also an asterisk by MBAF.
There is.
Yeah. So I think it's probably in the wrong place.
Uh, the asterisk by MBAF, I just wanted to make note, I should have done it earlier, is that those job numbers, because of the, this question comes up oftentimes in economic development, when do you count the jobs? We, we count upon announcement, and so obviously those MBAF jobs were announced a while ago. And, and they are not counted in this total of 776 that shows up on this page. So, just wanted to make, make note of that. So as we take a big picture view of this, what, those projects we just outlined on the previous page, what kind of impact does that have on our, on our community and our region? It's 776 new projected jobs in the region. Based on the community investment model, so that's the economic development model that the city of Manhattan uses and that we use as a part of the process for working with companies on economic development projects and economic development incentives. So based upon inputting the data from all these companies into that model, there results in over 1,300 new residents to the community, over $7.8 million in annual property tax revenue to the city of Manhattan. Now, of course, there are some property tax abatements associated Bev Hub, and, and there is a proposed property tax abatement with, with Scorpion. But, but after those abatements expire, that full amount is over $7.8 million in property tax revenue annually to the city. Over $1 billion in personal income over the next 20 years, if you take all of those jobs. We didn't highlight wage rates, but the really exciting thing about many of those, many of those companies on the previous page is they're paying significantly above our average wage for the region. And, and that's really something that I think we're proud of from an economic development standpoint. Almost $14 million in new, new retail sales tax revenue and over $700 million in capital investment in our immediate area from these projects. So as you can see, this is a very, and Jason alluded to it, that's been an exciting past six months. It's, it really is a very impactful six months. There's a lot of work to do on some of these projects. And we continue, as he alluded to, work with city staff, in particular with Scorpion, a lot of work there. But we will continue to see these through, that engagement, that relationship lasts well beyond project announcements. But, but the overall impact here is substantial. It's also exciting to take a look at all these other projects that are going on in the community, all of which the, the city of Manhattan plays an important role in facilitating. And so first off, the Edge Collaboration District at Kansas State, a key catalyst investment in our community with the university, the university foundation and K-State Athletics. The city investment along North Campus Corridor has obviously helped facilitate and, and develop that region. And there are really some exciting plans, not just the development we've seen in the Foundation Business Park and the Foundation Research Park and, and at Athletics, but there's some really exciting plans going to be coming forward for other projects in that area. And I can tell you that's a great asset for us as a community as we're looking to attract talent and attract companies to the region. Midtown in Aggieville, another exciting project, what a great project to be able to put out, show these kinds of images to folks and say, this is, this is planned for Manhattan, Kansas. This is a place in a walkable campus-adjacent district where, where a business can locate, where, where a company can grow and attract talent. And, and so obviously $40 million project projected generate $1 million in annual revenue for Aggieville's Tiff District when, when completed and filled. And finally, the Art and Light Museum facilitated, obviously, from the city's end through the use of Star Bonds, but an incredibly unique, incredibly unique asset for our community. But also the fact there's significant private investment going into that $43 million project. So in addition to those primary job creation projects we highlighted, I think it's important to remember that this other investment that's going on in the community will only continue to increase as we, as we drive job growth and, and we drive other business growth here. So obviously with all this growth, there are challenges, and that's part of our job in economic development is to help address those challenges. Going to highlight a couple things. Childcare, we hear this over and over. George Cant, our business, that does our business retention expansion program, hears this over and over and over again from folks that childcare is incredibly important. It's, it's a priority for us. We formed a childcare task force. And that group worked with a number of local stakeholders to put forth a Kansas Spark submission. And, and that is to fund a childcare business incubator. And so that was done also in conjunction with the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation. That is, that is still in process, but we look forward to being able to create something that can, that can add to our network of providers within, childcare providers within this community and help support growth in that sector so that that's a, that's an area that we can address. Housing, obviously, we've promoted and participated in the city's housing market analysis and are hosting a workforce hiring forum next week. So more information from the Chamber on that coming up on Friday, the 22nd. But look forward to then, once that analysis is completed, to work alongside our city elected officials, all of you and city staff, to, to work towards solutions as it relates to housing in our, in our community. Sites and buildings, you know, when it comes to attracting businesses, whether it be attracting businesses from the outside or helping our own businesses decide to grow here, because oftentimes that's a competitive process where they may be here. They may look to grow here, but they're probably entertaining, entertaining offers from other places as well. So to be competitive, we need sites and, and buildings, and we created a task force last year. Appreciate your support of the Industrial Speculative Building Program with IRBs that you passed last September. I can tell you, we have had interest in that program. We are actively engaged with some developers that are looking at the community as a place to do some speculative development and, and will continue to explore opportunities both for property and, and buildings to create additional inventory, additional assets and inventory in this community to attract jobs. And fine, and then talent and, and workforce, again, this is right up there at the top of the list. If it's not childcare, it's talent that, that we're hearing from our existing employers. If you look at the statistics, 22.3% unemployment rate. Employment grew by 2% over the last year, but that's still not necessarily keeping pace with some of our, our peer communities. And so there are a number of things that the Chamber is doing and working with our, with our economic development partners within the community. Chief amongst those, Amber Wilhelm, who's our Talent Strategies Coordinator, is leading our Made for Manhattan efforts and online and, and printed materials that are a resource for hiring and, and a resource for folks looking to move to the area. Within that, she's also out there visiting career fairs, veteran fairs. In fact, the, she and Janet will be on Fort Riley, and Janet's going to talk some more about this, but we'll be at Fort Riley this week to, at a veterans fair to try to make sure we get some of those folks looking at opportunities here in Manhattan. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Jason Smith participated in the, in the city's working group on that. And the Chamber has developed a, a committee that, we've got several members up here tonight that's actively engaged in a number of different initiatives and look forward to some of the events and the things that they have planned, planned moving forward. George is also hosting industry roundtables with specific industries so that we can better understand their needs. Young Professionals Group, Hype, is, is becoming more and more engaged, not just with our existing young professionals, but looking at ways of how can we engage folks like interns that are in our community, trying to convince them to stay here for a full-time job opportunity, a career opportunity after their internship. Working with college students, engaging them better, working with transitioning military. So the Young Professionals Group plays an incredibly key role. And then we have a new group called the Established Business Leaders. And so this is for folks that may be a little bit more established or advanced in their professional careers, looking for a way to stay engaged, give back to the community. And that group, although new, and, and George is leading a great effort on that, has already started talking with Hype and started talking with Spark about creating a mentorship program. I think those kinds of things, they take a lot of effort to get up and off the ground, but have a great opportunity to pay dividends down the road. And then finally, entrepreneurial funding. We are working with our partners to develop, across the ecosystem, to develop a investment continuum so that everything from small businesses to technology ventures that spin out of the university can try to find sources of local funding so they don't have to go completely elsewhere for that, and we have a greater opportunity to, to retain them here. That is both public-private and philanthropic, we would anticipate. And we also anticipate coming before all of you with an ask for public funding to help support small business funding programs in the future. So that's something that continues to be in the works and, and we look forward to presenting that to you. Ultimately, it's important that, it's important that we fund those businesses, again, to create opportunity here for all business owners. And Doug's going to talk some more about that, but also to ensure that we're retaining businesses here once they've started and begun to grow. So with that, as we talk about entrepreneurship, I'd like to introduce Sarah Siders, who is the Executive Director for Spark, as I highlight some of the, the activities at Spark and the things that they're doing within our entrepreneurial ecosystem.
Thank you Darren. Thank you Mayor, Commissioners. Good to be with you this evening, and I am very pleased to report on Spark's activity over the last year and share with you about what we've been up to and the impact that we've made. Spark has been tasked with collaborating with our partners to develop resources, improve connection to those resources for entrepreneurs, and communicate the stories of local entrepreneurs and the people who support them. And we have been working to achieve this for the last two years since we launched. So over the last two, over the last year, we are proud to share that we graduated 31 entrepreneurs from four cohorts over the last year. We also awarded $29,000 through four different pitch competitions to local entrepreneurs. We were also successful in gathering over 320 users to our entrepreneur directory as well as adding 60 entrepreneurship resources on that directory as well. These are all locatable on our website. So I'd like to share a story with you about how all of the partners within our entrepreneurship ecosystem are working together. I think this is really one of the most important things that we can illustrate here, just how these different partners and organizations and resources are all working to see the success of an individual entrepreneur, emerging business, and startup. So I want you to meet Tyler Bolts, the founder of Data Source. Tyler's a student at the Kansas State School of Engineering, and he connected with the K-State Center for the Advancement of Entrepreneurship. In the fall of 2021, just less than a year ago, he developed a data analytics company called Data Source. He was referred to One Million Cups through some connections we have on campus, and he presented his company to One Million Cups. And at that time, he was encouraged to pitch at the upcoming startup MHK Pitch Competition. He won the second-place runner-up position. And so he didn't quite say, land an award, but Spark pulled up with him and said, "Hey, you have a good thing going here. How can we continue to support you?" So we helped him locate an affordable, flexible, professional workspace where he was able to have a professional address and have meetings. And he was also able to develop a relationship with another area tech founder where this person became really a mentor to him in the early stages of his company. And that's been a very valuable relationship. Spark was also able to get him some valuable press coverage in a Midwest-based startup new source. And this allowed him to gain new business connections throughout the region as well as other capital opportunities, one of which was getting accepted into Digital Sandbox KC, where he was awarded $20,000 to build marketing and products and expand his company. So that is, you know, again, he's less than a year old, and we consider this to be an ecosystem success story where so many of our partners, as we always do, work together to hand an entrepreneur or startup founder between each other and make sure that we have a really connected experience for that person and get them what they need, no matter what stage they're at. But there's, are a few key resources that companies like Data Source continue to need and we, that we want to build here in the community. And you're going to hear this from all of us because we all believe that these are critical gaps that we are collectively working to fill. One of those is early-stage funding opportunities for entrepreneurs and innovation-led companies, including Black, minority-owned, and historically underrepresented business owners. And for startup founders specifically, we're looking to build peer and professional networks and community for innovation founders. So looking ahead, over the next year, Spark is going to continue to work to expand our collective impact in collaboration with our partners. And we're going to start that by activating our resource hub. We have an incredible website and dashboard that collects users and entrepreneurs, mentors, sponsors, and we have this growing directory of resources and people. So we want to continue to activate that and take that to the next level of usability. That is a 24/7 accessible centralized resource site, and we're excited to see that getting used even more over the next year. We want to improve connections to resources for small business owners as well as innovative tech and startup founders by building more robust networks for those innovators. And we want to continue telling the stories of area entrepreneurs and the people who support them so that throughout the region and even throughout the world, people can begin to see that the Greater Manhattan area is truly a great place to start and grow your business. I'm going to hand it over to Darren to close us out.
Thank you Sarah, and thanks for all the good work that Spark is, is doing. Next up, I want to introduce Doug Barrett. Doug is the owner of 400 North Creative, also Vice President of Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills. Black Entrepreneurs of Flint Hills is a fast-growing organization that's providing a lot of value to a, a significant number of entrepreneurs within our region. Excited to say that we're working together and including supporting Black Entrepreneurs of Flint Hills with some commitment of the private side of our economic development funding through Advantage Manhattan as potential matches for some grants that they're applying for to support future programming. So with that, Doug.
Mayor and Commissioners, good evening.
Good evening, everybody.
Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills, we came out of a necessity just after 2020 when we were seeking opportunities within the community for most of our businesses that had challenges. Some of the same things that have been kind of reiterated in tonight's session has been partnerships. Within the partnerships, we partnered with the Chamber. We partnered with Kansas State University Innovation Partners to bring us to where we are right now. Most of you probably are aware of the history of how we got here. But the point of where we are now is we are desperately needing help. Within our first two years, we became a 501(c)(3) where we have a leadership team and a board of directors. Within that, we've actually just recently got an administrative office at the new Within that, we've actually just recently got a administrative office at the new community house with, again, with the partnerships with Innovation Partners and Kansas Gas. We are currently advocating for access, access for entrepreneurs to get funding, access to capital, that's our number one thing. Again, what we keep hearing is how do we retain talent? This just past weekend, I heard two other minorities within the community who are leaving Manhattan because they didn't have those opportunities and one more future possibility in, in the fall. So again, we have to be able to retain the talent of persons that look like me. Also continue to develop leaders in the community across our region so that when we are in these rooms, we have the opportunity to share our, our challenges. We all have different experiences, but many of our challenges are different. When I say access to capital, while Sarah just mentioned the individual who just had this opportunity to advance, many of our businesses, business owners and businesses have not had that opportunity. They've had to seek funding outside of the state of Kansas. I know probably five or six right now that got their first business loans outside of the state, outside of the state of Kansas. One of our business owners, actually our president, she was awarded the Business Advocate of the Year in twenty twenty-one. So that, those are important things that our business owners are doing. Within that directory in front of you, those are eighty businesses that are actively full-time business owners and part-time business owners. And within our list, sir, we've got over a hundred that are in the, in our directory. So another twenty to twenty-five that are in that early startup phase that are trying to determine are they going to move forward or they're not going to move forward. A good portion of those businesses that don't, that did not receive funding are either utilizing some, some secondary form of funding, whether that's VA compensation, whether that's spouses in a business that's supporting the family. But the goal for us to work with the chamber is to be able to gain that access to funding to be able to help and support these businesses. Our goal is looking forward to be able to fund the Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills and the capacity of the organization as business owners coming to Kansas, as we look into diverse suppliers, as a lot of these new businesses are coming here, they're going to look for some of the black-owned businesses and underrepresented businesses to support their businesses, to support their staff. One of the most important things that we're currently doing right now is looking at our data and our metrics. Obviously, we know that data is what drives everything. Without data, we're not going to be able to move forward. So as we're looking at our data, we're trying to ascertain what businesses need what, where are the businesses that, you know, are in the early startup phase, are in the middle portions of their business to scale to the next level, and then business owners that are looking for additional funding to move their businesses to the next level. One of the biggest things that we are actually doing right now within that is growing our partnerships. Right now, we have the Chamber, Innovation Partners, Kansas Gas, but we're looking for additional businesses through our Community of Circle program, which is a way to donate to the Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills so that we can create internal grants for our businesses. In our region, I would say in Manhattan, it's slower to the table, like unlike Wichita, Topeka and Kansas City where you see the resources more readily available. So, you know, within our ask, within our partnerships, we'll continue to push with you at the city level to hopefully get the support we need and continue to grow Manhattan in the way that we want to see Manhattan look. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Commissioners, I will make sure that you get these, these slides that Doug was, that Doug was referencing there. Next up, I'd like to welcome to the podium Janet Nichols, our Military Community Liaison. See, Fort Riley and the military plays an incredibly important role, as you've heard us reference a couple of times tonight. It will continue to play an even more important role as we look to increase our ability to retain transitioning military, their, their spouses, partners and families in the area to help address some of the workforce issues we have going forward. Janet.
Good evening Commissioners, thank you so much for the opportunity. I appreciate the opportunity to represent Manhattan as your military liaison. I'm pretty sure this is my tenth time speaking to you in a July. So, so every year I have, seem to have more and more to report, so I appreciate your time. I went ahead and I'm starting off with the Fort Riley Economic Impact page from the handout that I passed out earlier. I like this slide because it has the highlights in green and some numbers and percentages up there. I realize it is a lot of numbers, but the color really seems to stand out and I really want to point out a couple of things. We're up in almost every category. The veteran expenditure one is kind of interesting, it's up over seven percent. And it's been kind of postulated that it perhaps is due to the license reciprocity bill that was passed last year. A lot of people say that wherever the spouse wants to end up is where the soldier ends up after the, their time in the military. And, you know, I also think, you know, in the past few years, we've worked a lot on talent, we've worked a lot with the Transition Assistance Program through our, with the Transition Assistance Coordinator, Amber Wilhelm, who's here tonight. I work a lot with her and I really do think that keeping that, that number's up a little bit because of a lot of different things, but those efforts definitely helped. The information is compiled and released by Fort Riley in their annual Economic Impact Survey. It's released in this little book every January, usually at the regional leaders retreat, but it is accessible anytime online. If you go to Fort Riley website, pull down the menu, pull, click on publications and it's usually the first or second thing up at the top. You know, these, uh, these populations generate the bulk of the economic impact for the area. We deal with military, family members, veterans, retirees and civilian employees. You know, it, it, it's a lot to take in and this is kind of a little blurry, so I'm going to go to the next page and I have that broken down a little more. But as you can see, the full economic impact from Fort Riley is four point one billion dollars with a B. That is with the accepted two point two dollar for every one dollar spent multiplier from the Congressional Budget Office. And, and when they talk about that multiplier, you're thinking, well, well, what is that? Well, that's me. I, I'm a veteran spouse and that number, they don't track that. They don't track my employment, they don't track what I spend, they don't track the taxes I, I, I pay. And, and military spouses aren't in those numbers either. And so there's a lot of hidden numbers hidden in there. So when they talk about the four billion dollars, it, it really is a lot and it is more than that one point eight six actual direct economic impact. And I included a photo on this page of the recent First Infantry Division Change of Command. Major General, now Lieutenant General DA Sims has moved on to the Pentagon and Major General John Meyer took command on May twelfth. So, and I'll get into that a little bit more in a moment, but, you know, it's kind of cool pictures though. I love talking about the Manhattan MRC lunches. I am really, really proud of the MRC lunch. We really came out of the gate strong this February, breaking pre-pandemic records for attendance two months in a row. February and March, we both had, we had a hundred and ten people attend both of those months. We have a very diverse list of guest speakers, a wide variety of them. I've listed a few up here. We have everyone from members of our federal delegation to senior leaders within the state. That's Perry Wiggins, Governor's Military Council there. Next month in August, I have the new Director of the Kansas Commission on Veterans Affairs, Bill Turner, speaking. We have senior leaders from Fort Riley. We had a behavioral health panel focusing on suicide prevention in February. So it, you, you never know who you're going to see or who you're going to hear. But really, it's the best place for Manhattan locals to interact with Fort Riley uniform and civilian employees and their families. So also I do like, want to mention, they haven't had Victory Week left, left yet, excuse me. It should be coming on in September. They have not set a date yet, but when they do, we will be hosting our annual combined lunch, which is probably the largest and only place where Fort Riley, Manhattan and Junction City can all interact and network and socialize together. I'm moving on to advocacy, advocacy and economic development. One ID Fort Riley and the European Mission. I, I really didn't think I could present this evening without mentioning the First Infantry Division's role in Eastern Europe and the war in Ukraine. As of right now, First Brigade is home, they were extended, they were supposed to be home in the spring, but they are now home. I saw Colonel McCarthy today at the Garrison Change of Command, so it's the first time I've seen him in twenty twenty-two. Most of the division staff and all of the Division Artillery Brigade are currently deployed to Eastern Europe into twenty twenty-three likely. Since taking over the division in May, Major General Meyer has cased the division colors indicating that the division is actually deployed. When Major General Sims left in February, it happened so fast, I think they really didn't know how long they'd be gone. But that kind of set the clock for that deployment in May, so they'll be coming in twenty twenty-three, not as originally planned in the fall. Now Second Brigade is in the process of returning for a second trip this year to the National Training Center in California. While nothing has been announced by the Army, a second trip to NTC in six months could end, indicate a deployment is on the horizon. We here at the Chamber take this seriously and are both monitoring the situation and hosting a group of regional leaders to address various actions and strategies should First Infantry Division's involvement in Eastern Europe go on for a protracted amount of time. Next, I want to talk about Federal Impact Aid. Impact Aid was designed to assist local school districts that have lost property tax revenue due to the presence of tax-exempt federal property, like a military installation, or due to the enrollment of a lot of federally connected children. So Kansas was the last state in the nation to distribute Federal Impact Aid across the strait using an equalization formula. As the Department of Defense makes basing decisions based on a military family quality of life, think education. And you can make these basing decisions without a BRAC or a base realignment enclosure. And we lost a brigade a few years back in twenty fourteen without a BRAC. We really need to make sure that this was changed to properly satisfy the DOD requirements of that funding of Impact Aid. So luckily, we worked hard. I worked with Governor's Military Council Perry Wiggins, I spoke to a lot of people in Topeka, a lot of our representatives at the state level and, and I am so happy to say that it did get changed. So, so now everybody's spending their Impact Aid as designed and designated and, and we're not the only state that has that color different than everybody else's on the big map. The Defense Community Infrastructure Program, DCP, provides funds for infrastructure projects in communities that neighbor military installations where the project adds military value to both the local community and especially the installation. This year's project is the Riley Avenue Reconstruction Project in Ogden. So this project is critical to the readiness of the First Infantry Division as it is the main access to Manhattan Regional Airport for Fort Riley via the Ogden Gate. And as we all know, last year's DCP funding helped the airport expansion project, which directly benefits Fort Riley. So we definitely want that road to be properly updated and maintained. It is also the main artery for Manhattanites who utilize Irwin Army Community Hospital, like me last week. So, so it's really important that that gets done. Plus Riley Avenue has anywhere between twelve thousand and sixteen thousand cars a day depending on deployment and soldier numbers. So Fort Riley Commanding General John Meyer has written an endorsement and I will hopefully let you know in September if that funding comes through. It is a direct benefit to Manhattan, even though it is not a Manhattan project and the Flint Hills Regional Council was instrumental on working with a large group throughout the region on that selection this year. And the photo is me, as mentioned a couple of times now, with Talent Strategies Coordinator, Amber Wilhelm. That is us in Kansas City back in January at a military hiring our heroes job fair. We are attending another one this week, but Amber and I are working really closely with the Transition Assistance Program in particular on Fort Riley. We've had a lot of meetings with them, we've worked with them, we've worked bringing Master Sergeant Spade, who's their liaison with soldiers to business after hours. He's even brought some soldiers with him who are transitioning and we have introduced them to people throughout the community to help them either in an entrepreneurial way or with, directly with a job. We are standing up the old KEEP program, the Kansas Employment Exploration Program. We have a meeting about that later this month. And that is where we take soldiers on a tour of various employers in the area, also some education facilities as well, K-State, M A T C, and hopefully get them a little bit excited about jobs and opportunities in Manhattan for employment. And then finally, here's some more of my program. Little Apple Brigade, we're holding steady, we're close to fifty members. We had the annual spring social and that was really great opportunity for access to leaders of Fort Riley. I'm really excited, the ball will be right next to Veterans Day, it's Saturday, November twelfth at the Manhattan Country Club. So I love having it right by Veterans Day, I think it's a nice fit. Military Family Appreciation Night at the Cow Valley Rodeo is next week. We again have fifteen hundred tickets, we're in the process of distributing both on post with the help of Fort Riley Garrison and MWR and the, and the Fort Riley USO and here in town at a couple of places, including the Chamber. We're also having our pre-rodeo picnic at five thirty just north of Potter Hall. If you're there at the opening night of the fair and the rodeo, you want to come in and say hi, by all means do, we'd love to see you. We've got a band, National Guard bands coming out as the Fort, one ID bands on vacation, coming out of Kansas City. So it's going to be a fun night again. Fort Riley Day at K-State, the best game of the year is Saturday, September seventeenth, the Wildcats are going to take on the Green Wave of Tulane. I'm sure it's going to be an exciting, fun game. And then AUSA Annual Meeting, I've started the planning for that. I would love to have the city back again. I have a picture of former one ID Commander General Par Funk, he spoke at lunch last year. And I'm really also excited, it looks like a lot of the COVID mitigation that changed a lot of things about last year's annual meeting and canceled a lot of events frankly. I was calling it annual meeting light. You know, it looks like we're, we're going to have a typical annual meeting. And honestly, a lot of newcomers who came for the first time last year had such a great time even at annual meeting light, they're coming back again and I'm pretty proud of that. And then the Manhattan Veterans Day, from the mall to City Hall. First off, I want to thank the city for their support of this event, we could not do it without you. And for many things, from having the post parade ceremony here in City Hall to a myriad of other ways, you guys just help us so much and we couldn't do it without you. It is the largest parade in Kansas and we'll see you on Veterans Day. And at that, on to the next. So thank you so much and if you have any questions, I'm here.
Right, hold on then.
Yes.
So is, is pretty much the Headquarters Brigade the only ones deployed as of this minute?
Right now, yes.
The Sustainment Brigade's home, the Cabs home?
Well, Division Artillery, which is about a thousand and then a couple hundred from the division staff, I wouldn't, probably not even more than two hundred, but it's all the primary staff. So, yeah.
Thank you, Janet. Appreciate all the great work that Janet does and I also want to take the opportunity to recognize the rest of our economic development staff that's here tonight. George Kent, our, our Business Retention and Expansion Manager is with us and, and Amber Wilhelm, our Talent Strategies Coordinator is, is with us as well. So I want to recognize their work and echo what Jason said about the quality of the, both the staff and the partnerships obviously that we, that we have. So our last slide on the economic development side of things is the breakdown of our annual budget request. Entrepreneurial Services remains, and this is all the same as it has been with the exception of a, an increase on military relations. Economic Development Staff, this supports two positions, the Director of Economic Development position and the Talent Strategies Coordinator position. Talent Attraction Programming and Workforce Development Job Fairs primarily falls under our Made for Manhattan Talent Attraction and Retention Programs. Knowledge-Based Economic Development, or KBED, is our partnership with, that includes the City of Manhattan, Kansas State University, Kansas State Foundation and Potawatomi County Economic Development. Obviously, within the chamber, we have some shared administration and technology on the operations side of our, of our function. And then Business Park Promotion and Research for Industrial Park Planning. So we, we, as part of our contract with the city, promote the Manhattan Business Park, but are also tasked now with looking at planning for the future. And, and as I alluded to earlier, you know, we've got, we've got not just some interest currently, but, but a, a pretty robust pipeline. And so that planning is very important right now. Then Community Marketing and Promotion, Business Attraction, most of our business attraction that we're doing outward-facing business attraction is done through our Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership. So those dollars are being leveraged with Potawatomi County as well. And then Military Relations with a request for fifty thousand dollars. As you saw, there's a significant amount of programming that's going on, on the military relation side of things and vitally important right now. So with that, that is our full budget request and I would stand Mayor Morris and Commissioners along with the rest of our economic development team and partners for any questions or comments.
Commissioners, do you have questions? Do you, good presentations by everybody, thank you for doing that. It was nice to see you Doug, for the first time presenting also. It was good to have this piece of information, appreciate that. I know Natalie Gordon, along with George, were working on the childcare. I know Natalie Gordon, along with George, were working on the childcare component and put out a request with Vern Hendrickson Group to the state. I just wanted to know the status of that.
Yep. Those requests that were put out as part of that submission process are still open. We know that there's been some prioritization at the state level around childcare, as you would expect right now with the workforce challenges that are at play. And really, childcare is very much a workforce challenge. And so, you know, we know of other communities that submitted childcare-related solutions for funding as well. And so, we would hope that there would be with that prioritization and that understanding that there are a lot of communities looking to create solutions, that there would be some programmatic funds for those solutions down the road. But that has, as of yet, not been defined or awarded.
Yeah. I think the slide and the information you gave today about housing, childcare, DEI, and the entrepreneurial sector spark and everything is extremely informative. It seems more focused. It seems more action-oriented, and there's a plan behind each of those elements. So, it's good to see that, although it may be in its beginning stages, it's good to see how that's formulating. So, I appreciate all the updates tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Go ahead, please.
Just want to echo, you know, great job, a lot of great stuff that we've got going on, and think you've got a lot of good things targeted. The one which you do have targeted, but maybe just to emphasize, because lately I've just been really getting into demographics, I've read a number of books and looking around, and really, the cloud I see on our horizon is by the end of the decade, we could be looking at 15% lower enrollment at K-State if we follow the demographic trend. And so, that's going to be a huge, and they know it. I mean, they're working on it, but so is every other university in the country. But then you talk about our talent and how we're going to get that talent. It really is a people game to get. So, I just say the more that we focus on that, you know, the better. I don't know if it's necessarily a question, but just out there that, you know, something we really need to work on. The other is something we've talked about, we talked about it in our retreat, is, you know, trying to work on a retail sales initiative. You know, about half or more of our property isn't subject to property tax. That means we run so much on sales tax. So, the more we can make ourselves more of a hub and more of the shopping in town, and any type of strategy we can do to really increase that, that's, you know, really going to help us out and really get us from a funding perspective and also make us more attractive because, you know, Kansas is known for very high property taxes, and, you know, we want to keep our rates down. So, there's going to be just a couple of challenges to throw out there, but overall, really good stuff.
Thank you. I look forward to engaging some more on both of those things.
Just one thing to clarify, you know, this $543,000 comes out of the Economic Development Fund, and that's just for the public out there watching. It's not your sales, it's not your property tax. It's the ECODEVOT tax that was passed a couple of years ago.
That is a point I should have clarified. Correct. Yes, this is a budget request out of Economic Development Funds.
I'm just decided, I'm glad you decided to recruit and retain George back on the team.
As am I. As am I. You're here to George.
I appreciate the presentation this evening, and it is more money, and, you know, we need to consider the percentage increase as we do with everything. I really appreciate the attention that the Chamber has been giving to diversity, equity, and inclusion. I think we become a better community and more able to attract people when we represent, when we include everybody. So, I want to be sure we do that and not just talk it. We have to do it. I appreciate always getting the military statistics, Janet, and your attention to that. It's, the Fort Riley economic impact here is, and K-State, both together are the engines and agriculture, of course, always, that drive our community as a whole. And so, it's, we have to pay attention to and worry about Fort Riley. At least I have found myself worrying lately. And I really appreciate, Janet, you're bringing the hotel costs down for AUSA, because I wasn't going to go, because they were just too high, couldn't justify going. So, I just want to praise the success that the community, you, the city, everybody, K-State, everyone has had with attracting Scorpion. And I don't think we can say that loud enough or long enough, and it just, all of our expectations is that that will work out, and that's where we're headed. And I'm glad that Potawatomi County is on board, and it just looks like, I mean, I know we have a lot of work. It's going to be every legislative meeting for the next couple of months, I think, but certainly, we want that to work. And the new museums of art and light, and I think they're everything we're doing together is what is making the difference. So, I know that it's taken a while to build this team, as you and Jason talk about, and I just want to, you know, caution about growth in the future, because there's only so much we can afford, but, so thank you.
And I would note that the, there is an increase there of $10,000 in the Military Relations line item, and obviously, we presented tonight. There's a lot of importance on what's going on there, and it was even brought up at the year-end report last year, that that was something worth further supporting. So, would ask for consideration of that.
Well, it hasn't risen for so long. It's only kind of logical to see it in there this year, and...
It can only be a labor of love for so long, before you actually have to start paying the person to do the work.
I just was thinking Janet hadn't had a raise in all those years. So, are there other thoughts before we? Okay.
Thank you very much. With that, Karen Hibbert, our Vice President and Director of Convention Visitors Bureau.
Does she have a movie?
Thank you.
She usually does.
Stay tuned. You never know what's up my sleeve.
My name is Kevin Roberts, and I'm a professor of Hospitality Management at Kansas State, and I'm pleased to serve as Chair of the Manhattan Convention of Visitors Bureau Steering Committee. While I was unable to be with you in person this evening, it is certainly a pleasure to be with you via video, to introduce the second quarter presentation and the lady that I continue to say needs no introduction. During the second quarter, which covers April through June, the data presented will illustrate that the tourism sector is continuing to rebound after COVID. Locally, in May, we celebrated National Tourism Week, welcoming home Bridget Everett and celebrating Bridget Everett Day, and then ending the week with the 2022 Air Guitar Regional Championship, which packed the Warrim Opera House. We celebrated the 10th anniversary of the Flint Hills Discovery Center, welcomed MHS alumni back for the second annual alumni reunion, applauded the opening of the Expedition Center at Sunset Zoo, and recognized Marsha Rozell, our Sports Leisure Sales Manager, for earning her Sports Tourism Strategist designation. Tonight, we will also present our 2023 budget request, which will help us continue to promote Manhattan, bringing new visitors and events to the city while fostering relationships with those who already visit Manhattan. With that, it is my pleasure to welcome Karen Hibbert, Director at the Manhattan Convention of Visitors Bureau, to the podium.
Now, that's dedication to speak when you are away, working to be here to do a second quarter presentation. Wouldn't you agree with me?
Yes.
And the other thing that we always talk about at the Chamber, what's the common thread? You have to visit a community first before you decide to invest and live here. So, it's with great pleasure that we do share with you our findings for the second quarter and the successes that Kevin has mentioned. Certainly, we think that our second quarter meetings and events shows that we are moving in the right direction. During the second quarter, we hosted 54 meetings and events to our community with nearly 6,800 attendees, yielding about 4,600 room nights with an estimated economic impact of $4,889,066. We still have a ways to go from where we were in 18 and 19, but we are on the way up. Certainly, Visit Manhattan works to the future. This past April, Topeka, Kansas, had the pleasure of hosting the African-American Travel Conference. As Kansas was key in freedom's frontier, this conference and the results will indeed bring visitors not only to Kansas, but to Manhattan as well. Marsha Rozell represented Visit Manhattan at this conference, in which there were 120 attendees. She had 35 appointments, and that has resulted in two leads, with more to follow, with people that are interested in bringing back travel groups to come to our community. We are so very, very proud of Marsha Rozell and her dedication as our Sports and Leisure Sales Manager. This May, as Kevin mentioned, Marsha has received her Sports Tourism Strategist designation. So, when you get a signature from her, you'll see that STS behind her name. She received that at the Sports ETA Symposium in Fort Worth, Texas, this May. There were 40 designations that were given, with only two of those coming from Kansas. Marsha's education and passion for sports continues to serve not only Visit Manhattan well, but the community well. She is diligent in creating and developing those relationships to bring unique sporting events into our community. Just to name a few that Marsha has been responsible for bringing, has been a geocaching event, pickleball, gymnastics, cycling events, and soccer are just a few that she can add to her list. So, the second quarter of this year signals spring. Sports certainly bear that fact. Visit Manhattan partnered during that second quarter reflecting April, May, and June, we partnered and hosted 18 sporting events, which yielded over 6,324 attendees with an estimated economic impact of $1,773,945. As requested, we also wanted to share with you sporting events that are booked into the future. Obviously, this last weekend, we hosted the Little Apple Paddle. We also soon will be hosting the Just Try It Triathlon, as well as we're very excited to say that the Heart of America Volleyball will be returning in February of 2023, and we are very excited for the fact that they will be once again using our new facilities. We also are working with the Mid-America Youth Basketball to host more tournaments this fall, and those dates have yet to be determined. Certainly, Manhattan's attractions are what makes Manhattan a unique facility. Our two unique attractions had big celebrations this spring. Sunset Zoo had a cool day to cut their ribbon for the Expedition Asia Experience, as well as the Flint Hills Discovery Center celebrated 10 years and cut the ribbon on the new kidscape. And of course, their temporary exhibits always encourage that visitor to return again and again. National Tourism Week was certainly a week that we celebrated and celebrated in a very fun way. Take a look as we've captured that. As we welcome Bridget home, and the proclamation was read for Bridget Everett Day, what a special time that was for her, but also for the community. So, thank you to each and every one of you for that. I can tell you Bridget was overwhelmed with the reception that she had on coming home, reminiscing as she went to her childhood home, as she took us down memory lane a little bit, even as we went to the Memorial Stadium, and she told the story about where her family home was located at. That was part of their Thanksgiving celebration, was going to Memorial Stadium and playing touch football after they had had Thanksgiving dinner. It was a delight to do that. And then to end the week with our Air Guitar Regional Competition in Warrim Theater being packed was just such a great way to be able to celebrate tourism here in Manhattan and the impact that it has on us. Traditionally, and I think I just skipped over it, sorry, let me go back, month to month, how we're doing with our star report, we still have a way to go. For the month of May, and this slide reflects May's activities, we sat at 57.9% occupancy. That average daily rate is going up a little bit at $119.45, with the revenue per room is $69.19. Year-to-date through the month of May, we still have a long ways to go. We're still setting at about 50.1% in occupancy, with that average daily rate of $105.85. The revenue per room is $53.07. But take a look at June, as to how June is doing. It's kind of up and down. It's kind of like riding a wave. Our highest week of June was that third week with a 70.3% occupancy compared to the second week in June in 2021 with a 70.8%. I ran a report right before it came this evening to see what that was. It was a variety of conferences that come in and out of our community in the month of June. So, again, we have a ways to go, but we are encouraged. As I talk with the hoteliers, they also are seeing it just continuing to move, but we still know that we have a ways in which to go. Yes?
Karen, I have a question for you.
Yes.
So, the beds, if you go back one or two slides, have increased to 1,294. And in the past, since 2018, it seems like that's the most beds we've had in a while. Was there...
Remember, we added to our inventory, the courtyard?
Yeah, but have we ever had more than 1,294 beds?
By a few. When we had, the original was the Holiday Inn that was out on Turtle Creek Boulevard. That added a little bit more into our inventory. But what I can confidently say with our hotel inventory now, we have really great rooms, all different kinds of price points, but we have really quality rooms. You choose. That hasn't always been the case in the past.
Right. And the reason I want to point it out, point that out, is because even though it might say 54% or 57%, we're looking at more, more rooms. So, I think the revenue you're seeing is going to probably be even better than what we've seen ever before, because that percentage is relative to the number of beds we have. So, if it's 40, you know, 54% compared to like 1,100 beds, that's different than to 1,294 beds. So, I think it's good that we have more beds, and most of them, if it's above 50%, that's always a good thing, and it continues to increase. So, I'm glad that... There's always this question in our community, do we need another hotel? How many hotels do we need? And as Commissioners, we don't, I feel we don't have a say on what type of businesses want to set up their business here. We only approve zoning and codes and such. But there was always this question, do we need another hotel? And it seems like we do, because they're obviously being utilized, and I think there'll probably be more so as the events tend to get more and more back into where they need to be.
Certainly. And not to get hung up on that, but to your point, you don't build a hotel just for football weekends, but I can tell you things will look a lot different at the end of this year because we checked what hotel availability is. We've got seven home games this weekend, and if our visitors don't have a room, they're going to be hard-pressed to find that. We have a few properties that have a few coming on, but overall, we're sold out for football weekends. football weekends. So we're very grateful for that, and you can see that the impressions for that ad What does help, that second weekend in September, we're re-engaging a old Big Twelve opponent with Mizzou coming to town. Marcia, are you going to go to that game? was over seven hundred thousand impressions that were made. Marcia is a Mizzou grad, we love her anyway, but that weekend, there's a lot of people So, as we continue to monitor those social media performances, our organic social media that are coming to town for that, just for that reason. So football helps, but you don't build a hotel. simply means that no advertising dollars are directed for those. Our charge is, let's fill it Sunday through Thursday, because weekends don't take care We've had a seventy-nine percent increase in our organic engagement since the first of themselves, just as Marcia's efforts with sports and us being a college community where quarter, with our organic impressions and clicks increasing by nearly fifty percent, sports are so important, activities happen on, on those weekends, as it is. and you can see those ads certainly help with that. And our goal with our paid ads is to target consumers to continue to gain an awareness So, yep. Now if I can get out of here, I'll go to the next one. of Manhattan as a travel destination. With our paid ads, we've had a seventy-seven percent increase in impressions from the first Our social media certainly is, is so very important for us, because it helps us to quarter already. monitor our performances. Social media is indeed a great engine to help spread the word about Manhattan. Our April ads highlighted the Flint Hills Discovery Center, because they celebrated both the tenth year celebration, but also is the Flint Hills Festival, and they performed And we've set goals, yearly goals, for both our meetings booked, booked room nights requested, very, very well. And I wanted to share with you one of those social media ads that you would see. as well as social media. This busy chart shows you that year-to-date, we have booked eighty meetings for in the future, and we had set a goal for a hundred and twenty, so we're well over halfway on that already. Our room nights, both Marcia and I agree that that's a little dicey, but we set that as a goal as anyway, and our goal for the year was thirteen thousand five hundred in room nights, and we already are at nine thousand four hundred and nine. And our social media engagement, the goal is over thirteen million in impressions, and we are well over with four million already for that online engagement. So, our transient guest tax receipts, as we anticipate what those will be, we are encouraged with what it looks like for 2023 for that budget. We believe that the estimated transient guest tax collections for 2023 will be over two million dollars. That's the highest that our transient guest tax collections have ever been estimated. Keeping in mind, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Visit Manhattan receives about sixty, sixty-five percent of those collections, so with that, we are requesting and asking that the C V B budget would receive one million, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars, in which to encourage and allow us to continue to market Manhattan as a visitors destination, as a place to hold your meeting and conference and special event. So with that, I think that you would agree with me, as we have been short-staffed for well over a year, we could not have been successful without the efforts of Marcia Rozell, working diligently, wearing many, many hats, as we have worked together to do that. We will be adding, our convention sales manager will be joining us on August the first, so we will be back to almost being normal again, if you can be normal as a Convention and Visitors Bureau. So with that, I would stand for any questions that you might have for us.
I'll just make a comment. Thank you for the presentation, and I think all of it was very well done. And Marcia, I really appreciate everything you do. I know yours, well, most of C V B is not a nine-to-five job, weekends, weekdays, and all kinds of weather and everything, but also being part of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I think that brings a different lens to the city, as well as to the recreation facilities and how they're being used. And one of the things we wanted to emphasize with the Anthony and Eisenhower Rec Centers was make sure we had some competitive play, and I think we are seeing the success of those. And I know that takes a ton of work, just not just recruiting them to come here, but then following through with their stay here. So I appreciate all the initiatives and the energy that's put into it, and I look forward to having more of those as well. Thank you.
I don't know if it's for you or for Rena, but how are the 2022 collections going versus where we expect them to be, if it's a one point eight million is what we're hoping to get? Are we sort of lacking?
So, yes, sir. We have collected over one million dollars in the transient guest taxes for 2022. The budget was one point eight million, and so we will receive another distribution sometime in July, and then we can provide an update to you all during that next work session.
Okay, so far, so good.
So would you say we've received one million, that's as of this is July, so that would be as of the May report?
So, as of May, we have received over one million.
Yeah, that's what I think, because it's all, the sales tax reports are always two months behind the current month.
And our transient guest taxes are on a quarter basis, so they're not included in that sales tax report.
Okay.
So, just to make sure, so is that off of five months of collection or six months of collection? That's six months, isn't it, the million dollars?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you very much, Karen. I think we've appreciated all your presentations. They've been quality work, thank you. With no further discussion?
There was one slide in the packet that has a tourism convention budget laid out and broken down. Could we show that?
Sure.
So the public can see it, because I want to point out a couple of things that are different from previous years. Yeah, I think that slide, you know, gives you the, the big picture of, you know, the transient guest tax does more than just take care of the C V B, which is important. But you can see that we've traditionally, you know, we've channeled some of that money to the Aggieville Business District and downtown Manhattan, the Arts Center, the Wolf House. You know, we've got some debt obligations that that's paying for, the Convention Center, but for 2023, you know, a hundred thousand is going to go into the general fund. You know, you might, you might wonder, well, you know, that's new, but to me, that's important, because the, the general fund is also helping indirectly with Convention Visitors Bureau by doing things like upgrading the electric on Points Avenue. We've got some electrical projects down in Blue Earth Plaza that need to be fixed, so we can maybe do the little Christmas event down there a little bit better. And so I just wanted to point that out, I think that's good use of the money. It looks like there'll be thirty-four thousand dollars left over, maybe, providing the collections come in, but it sounds like your collection report, you know, if we got a million dollars the first six months, we're well on track at exceeding these numbers, and I think that's good. And, and this really helps with the property tax burden. I point that out, because I get a lot of emails, people concerned about property tax, and they look at the city budget, and it's more than property tax. And anything that is done here with this transient guest tax really helps the, the bottom line on the bill levy and property tax expenditures.
So, Ron, what is the Convention Center the only debt obligation, or is that, some of that go to the Discovery Center too?
No, it's, nothing goes to the Discovery Center. Remember, we switched to the, there's some debt service on our artificial turf out at the Frank Edinburgh Park, and then I think that's all of it.
And the conference centers.
And then a little bit on the conference center, okay. So, yeah, there's no transient E S tax going to the Discovery Center. There is some special part of RIC Fund, which is alcohol tax. That's what we replace that with. But, I mean, I do think that's, a hundred thousand is a, is a start for that. I think one of the things that I've been saying a lot lately is, we look to, to folks that we can't just focus on the cost of projects, we need to focus on the cost of operating those projects in the future, whether it's turf fields or, or whatever the case may be. We need to have a, a resource to be able to do that, and I don't, I'm not necessarily recommending this, Karen, so don't get alarmed, but I don't know where, I mean, we talked about during, I think we did raise the transient gas tax a little bit at, when we built the Convention Center originally, and, and I know that's important for competitive, and I'm sure it's even more important coming out of COVID to be, continue to be competitive. So that's a balance, but that might be some of the things we look at, and I also know there's a lot of folks with a, a lot of ideas to get more attraction here, so all of those are part of that mix, so thank you.
Okay, thank you for your after comments. Appreciate you all coming. It's been important that we hear your proposals, and we'll be talking some more as the month, the next two months go by, and so with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
We don't adjourn.
We have a briefing.
Oh, we have a briefing. That would be important. Sorry, it's not on the agenda. I didn't, I missed it.
Page two.
Yep.
So I think that's a good lead, and, and so this was obviously our, our first work session under our new format, and so we kind of tried to list that on the agenda, as well as some of the new rules that we had put in place, was regarding public comment, and in the future, we talked about, you know, if, if you wanted to allow for public comment, then y'all needed to vote to allow that to occur, and just, you know, I don't, we can kind of just play that by ear. Obviously, this is, I think, a trial and error period too, if we find something that we just really don't like how that's working, so let's go change our resolution. That's the kind of feedback I think we'd like to have as well, but, so we listed on the agenda that was kind of similar to what we'd have done in our briefing sessions in the past. So again, I'm not sure that's exactly what we want to do, but I do have quite a few things to cover tonight, and, and I also thought that would be an opportunity for you all to update on, because we nearly didn't have a space in our regular meeting for commissioner comments, we hadn't really, and that would be the, the trade-off there, is that where you want to, a lot of things you want to talk to each other about, like the Housing Authority that Commissioner Monobot last time, you know, that's more of a discussion for feedback for, you know, what do you think about this came up at this particular board meeting, and I'm looking for some, some help on what y'all think about. So that, that was kind of, kind of the intent for, kind of leaving that format the way it was. But I'd like to just start out with, I gave you all a Parks and Rec Update PowerPoint. This was what Wyatt Thompson, our interim Parks and Rec Director, provided to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board last night, yesterday, well, started in the afternoon, it went into the evening. It was a rather long meeting, but he did a, a nice job of laying it out. You should have got this afternoon, a copy of a news release that provided some information. There's a link to the recording of the presentation, as well as the full meeting. I think we went, they went a little after seven last night, and we did have some public comments, I think there was about half a dozen, roughly, public comments at the meeting. Also, we've been working, I've been working with the Chair and Klimak of the Board to schedule a special meeting of the Park Board, that's been set for Monday night, the eighteenth. The Park and Rec Advisory Board certainly wanted to extend the invitation for you all to attend that. They would kind of serve as hosts. We have retained a facilitator that they recommended. We haven't finalized all of that yet, we're still working on that this week, but it's Mike Mattson, recent to the Chamber, so the, still looking at the format, but we're thinking some kind of forum that presents maybe a condensed version of some of this information, just as an overview, but the news release encouraged folks to really go out and watch that presentation, so they have a better understanding of the situation, provided a lot of good updating this material about where we are program-wise and what our challenges, some of our challenges are moving forward, as we look to, you know, have an opportunity to talk about some of the challenges we have and what we're trying to produce in the coming season, as well as what, what can we do to secure the future, and how do we sustain some of that, that we, programs that we need from a funding. I've also met with Vern Hendrix with the Foundation, and they're, they're certainly, it's a high priority to provide additional funding for, and assistance to the Parks and Recreation Program. I talked to both Ed and Vern both about forming a Parks and Recreation Foundation. We've talked about a format maybe similar to how the school district has formed. It's a, it's not a pure community foundation, it's affiliate foundation that's separate. So those are just some of the discussion that's happening, and I think we've been getting some, some positive feedback in that regard. So, Garrett, that's kind of what we're shooting for. That meeting will start at seven P M. at the fire station on Monday, and so if you're planning to attend, let us know, so we can notice. So at least there's two, is there a third? Yep, so, okay, we'll, we'll notice it.
I replied to City Clerk's.
Okay, very good.
I appreciate the work done on that update, because I've been hesitant to answer, you know, any emails, because I didn't have hard facts and didn't want to mislead anybody, but this, this is great information, and I think that'll answer everybody's questions if they'll just read it, and so I'll make good use of that. Appreciate the work on that, Wyatt. I know that wasn't easy to do, to try to say, this is where we are, this is what we changed, this is where we're going. So, so I like that. Thanks a lot.
Is the meeting going to be livestreamed or anything?
As of now, not right now, it isn't planned to be.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to know, I'll be there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, again, that's kind of, this is kind of a kickoff. We had already, I don't, you recall when Eddie was talking about back in the department updates of doing some kind of strategic plan for resetting and setting the priorities of the community, so that was originally planned for the fall, after some of the things had calmed down, we're starting a little sooner, because we have to, just because of the circumstances that we're in. So obviously, this isn't intended to be a one-and-done. I'm also agreed to do some media interviews this week with Ed, so, F Y I.
What is the schedule for the strategic planning, if you're moving it up? Is there one yet?
We don't have one yet.
Okay. Let us know when you, when you get there.
Yep.
Okay.
Will do. Since the, it's fresh in your mind, you saw on National Tourism Week with Bridget Everett in town, obviously, we did a promotion for her. We have a request from H B O. to utilize Johnny Caw in some of their movie programs with Somebody Somewhere presentation, and so they've asked for our permission to be able to, to use Johnny Caw in some of their television recording and shows, and they've signed us a waiver to agree with that. We didn't allow this last time, we just really didn't know. This was about a year or two years ago, I guess, when, and they did come to town and do some filming, and, you know, they shot some shots, but we didn't give them explicit permission. They're, and they're asking for explicit permission this time, they're going to come to town again, and really, the, the issue becomes with, in using Johnny Caw is... So that was originally planned for the fall, after some of the things had calmed down. We're starting a little sooner, because we have to, just because of the circumstances that we're in. So obviously, this isn't intended to be a one-and-done. I'm also agreed to do some media interviews this week with Ed, so FYI.
What is the schedule for the strategic planning, if you're moving it up? Is there one yet?
We don't have one yet.
Okay. Let us know when you, when you get there, okay?
Will do. Since it's fresh in your mind, you saw on National Tourism Week with Bridgette Everett in town. Obviously, we did a promotion for her. We have a request from HBO to utilize Johnny Caw in some of their movie programs with Somebody Somewhere presentation. And so they've asked for our permission to be able to use Johnny Caw in some of their television recording and shows. And they've signed us a waiver to agree with that. We didn't allow this last time, we just really didn't know. This was about a year or two years ago, I guess, when, and they did come to town and do some filming. And, you know, they shot some shots, but we didn't give them explicit permission. They're asking for explicit permission this time, they're going to come to town again. And really, the issue becomes with, in using Johnny Caw, is it's kind of intellectual property? And do we believe that Johnny Caw is ours to give that permission to? And do we have any consideration for it? They're not offering any, but it's, you know, really, we haven't done, we probably should engage an intellectual property lawyer to determine some of these things. We're not aware of anybody else claiming to have some ownership interest in Johnny Caw. That's the risk we run. So if somebody else did have an ownership interest, there's no records that would indicate anything when it was donated or constructed in City Park, that they retained some kind of ownership control over it. It's never come up, didn't come up when you've all done work on it or anything like that. So I think it's a pretty low risk. It's just, I didn't want to give that blanket approval without having a visit with you about it. And certainly, I think it could be, should be in our best interest, because this could come up with other types of, whether it be sculptures or whatever on city property that we might want to have in a film and actually engage some of the Kansas Department of Commerce film components, that they might give us some advice on how we might go about doing some of that kind of stuff. Any objections?
You know, when I looked at all that stuff in Historic Society, when we were doing that Johnny Caw project, I couldn't find anything except Phyllinger, you know, did that book. And he basically didn't even copyright that. He said, you know, it's just open source. And so I don't think anybody ever has. I've always wondered why the city doesn't do that. You know, why couldn't we copyright it and make some money on it? Because nobody does own it, to my knowledge.
Right.
And so why don't we take ownership of it?
Well, we don't have that copyright at the time, so I, are there any objections to granting permission to use it? Okay.
No, I don't, do you need, do you want to seek, are you asking to seek Intellectual Property Council?
I don't think we have the time and resources to engage in that by the time they want to use.
So we're just, okay.
But I think longer term, for the future, it probably would be a good idea. We'll certainly investigate what that might entail. There might be some other options too, like I said, with the Kansas Film Commission or others that are certainly encouraging folks to come here and make movies and.
I think when you draft the agreement or whatever, definitely Katie's eyes are going to be necessary for that.
There's a window, right, of start and stop or something?
Generally, this one's pretty blank, broad. It's kind of forever. So we'll try.
I'm just curious if it would, if you had to have a lawyer look into the possibility of copyright, what would it cost?
I don't know for sure. I mean, that's something that.
Because we still have some funds in that Johnny Caw account that is not in the city fund, that we might be able to contribute to all of it, or at least part of it.
Okay.
Because I think it's worth, it's worth doing.
All right, thanks, very good, thank you. I've been invited to attend the Arts and Humanities Advisory Board meeting tomorrow. They have expressed a desire to have a budget as an advisory board to utilize for the betterment of arts in the community. And my primary message to them is none of our advisory boards have a budget. They give you recommendations based on projects and that are in other city departments. But I just wanted to give you that, that information. They do, they want more than that.
We can't help them, because the city doesn't set it up that way.
But didn't Vern have a system for donating money?
Yep, yep.
To me, that's where I would channel them, say, that's where you get your money.
I would say it's probably more about control. Who's controlling what, so.
And Vern likes to control.
We're not getting any art, is the point. It stalled for two years.
I did also get a request, just today actually, from K-State. They are forming a Great Plains Defense Manufacturing Community component. And they're reaching out to the traditional partners and stakeholders to kind of support that endeavor. It's, I would say it'd be a broader extent of everybody that's kind of involved in Kbed today, plus more, that are wanting to support that effort at K-State as they work for some grants and have this inaugural, be an inaugural member of the consortium. There's no financial request at all, it's just a letter of support. And so I think it makes a lot of sense to do that. It certainly can focus on military and biomanufacturing. And certainly, I think can be, there's a $5 million available for the Department of Defense in funding some of this. And it will reach beyond Manhattan, but also the KC Metro, kind of the Animal Health Corridor kind of thing. So I think it's a good idea, and I was planning to write a letter of support, but I wanted to see if there was any objection to that.
I'm supportive. The Flint Hills Regional Council has been invited also, and has, is, on Friday, will agree to, I think, to write a letter of support, because it is such a broad area, from Kansas City to Manhattan, Salina, and down to McPherson. It just is important that we all work together.
A couple other things before I get into the planning chart. Let's see. Just some upcoming meetings. City-County County Meeting is next Thursday here. A couple of items on that agenda. One is the Kansas Riverfront Development, and also a presentation on the proposed Manhattan Housing Project that we talked about at your last briefing session. The Intergovernmental Luncheon is the July 25th. Mary Martel, who's Vice President and Regional Administrator for Stormont Vale, is the Speaker at the Intergovernmental Meeting. We also, I think, mentioned last time, the inter-region visit that the Chamber is sponsoring. That's September 26th and 27th. And that is a trip to Wichita and Oklahoma City, looking at entrepreneurship, innovation, sites and buildings, housing, DEI, young professionals, and other issues. Janet mentioned the AUSA Conference, October 9th through the 12th, Sunday through Wednesday. That's on top of the League of Kansas Municipalities Conference, which is in Overland Park on the 8th through the 10th. I think it starts actually noon at 9th for most of the general sessions. And then that National League of Cities City Summit is in Kansas City this year, and they have a reduced rate for Kansas and Missouri officials at $500. And that's consistent up until the conference. It's not a, it's not in the, it's cheaper than the early bird was, and that's already passed. So those are the upcoming meetings. I think you all probably got, or should have gotten this, saved the date on 9/11. So the second year over at Manhattan City Park, honoring our heroes. Lord Bishop with the Volunteer Center is coordinating that. I've been sitting in on it on behalf of the city. And so that's looking to be from 3:00 to 5:00 that afternoon, with the first ID band is playing during some different exhibits and events during that time. And then a picnic and programming that begins at 5:00 or 5:30 with speakers that are planning for that. And I think they requested a proclamation for September 6th for that evening as well. So just wanted to make sure you were aware of that.
What's the date?
So 9/11.
September 11th.
Sunday. On a, on a Sunday afternoon is the intended event. The planning charts, if everybody's got those handy. So the past three, three of the last four Mondays, I've been over in Westmoreland, having good discussions with the Potawatomi County Commission. This, yesterday, we, they did vote 3 to 0 to approve our resolution requesting their approval of our island annexation. So that process has started, and that's your primary general agenda item on the 19th. Also associated with that on that agenda, we'll have on the consent agenda, a call for a special meeting on July 26th. So that work session will be a special meeting to consider a second reading of that annexation ordinance, we're trying. So originally, we'd hoped that Pot County would have voted on that a couple of weeks ago, or three weeks ago. So that kind of set the schedule back. So we told the company representatives that we would try to make up certain time for that on the original schedule by having some special meetings. So hopefully, you're concurring with that. Again, there's a lot of activity related to that. A lot of things on the agenda here for the 19th, several second readings, which you're familiar with. We did have a bid for the asphalt overlay project, just a little over a million dollars for the shelling construction. That'll be on for award, got a final plat. We've got a grant amendment to the Rehab Administration Plan for CDBG. We have a quick claim deed relative to the Lee Mill Village components we've been talking about. We have some professional services agreement for the wastewater treatment plant, solids upgrade and expansion. And that's a selection committee recommendation to negotiate a contract. Is, are one of you on that? When are you on that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I don't remember how many proposals you had. The traffic master plan component, got a negotiated contract to bring that back to you. Several items here on North Manhattan Avenue that are related. So you might recall, we had a previous project that we had some preliminary design on that was a City University Fund project. This was to get rid of the yellow flashing lights on North Manhattan and replace them with actual signals, traffic signals at the intersections. That project has, was, had been approved and was in the concept design. Then as we got into the Aggieville designs and the cycle track concept, that kind of got molded into that. Since then, K-State has decided they want to do, they've had, they've got some issues they need to deal with, with, which lane is it?
Originally, where the flashing bulb is at Petticoat.
Petticoat.
We're now with Campus Creek Road, there's some erosion issues that the university wants to work on. So we've decided that we're going to realign the Campus Creek and Bertrand Road to fully signalize that intersection, and then close the push-and-walk entrance on Petticoat.
And so as part of that, and we've talked with K-State about this, they'd like to join our North Manhattan project, so we can get a better cost-effective project out of it. And then we'll have a memorandum of understanding with them, that they'll pay the cost of their portion. We'll delineate it out on the bid sheet, so that they'll all get bid and constructed with that project. And so this item is actually the design contract. We previously selected Olson to do the preliminary engineering work on that. And so it will be a full design contract to proceed with those signals, as well as the rework for K-State. We'll only be paying for the City University Fund project with the signals and the cycle tracks, a piece of that, plus its piece of the North Manhattan Aggieville project.
Yeah, the cycle track does extend south into the existing Aggieville project that's happening today. That won't be with City University Funds, that'll be the Aggieville Project TIF fund.
But it's only, originally, that cycle track was projected to go quite a good distance on North Manhattan, and now it's only going one block.
Yeah, now it'll span basically from the signalized intersection at Vettier, south into Aggieville, all the way to Fremont Street.
And it'll go on campus. Okay? Let's see, I think that's, that's all for that meeting, that's quite a bit. A lot of items, pretty thick packet. So that, put that special meeting there. Again, we'll have our third primary work session on our budget in front of you that night, and then the second reading of the annexation ordinance for the special, special meeting. On August 2nd, we're looking at a public hearing, and this is to rezone Howey's main facility there on South 10th. One of the, it had a, it was a, it was, had a special use permit in our old zoning. And so they want to keep some of that, and so that's, our new development code is creating some of those changes. But they're also wanting to, basically to be able to allow their current recycling to continue there. Obviously, they've bid on our property as well, so they want to do that. This was at the planning board already, and that was, I think, approved unanimously for that rezoning request. We've got a few consent agenda items. We'll have the overhead power location for the North Campus Corridor Phase 11, as well as the nomination of Yuma Street Historic District. That's kind of something some of you may be aware of, and maybe you're not. So another good reason to watch the Park Board meeting last night was that that item was there for them to look at, because of Douglas Center. So basically, we're looking at a half-block, that one-block section of the 900-block of Yuma, half-block deep on each side. So it's the historic properties plus the Pilgrim Baptist Church that's at the intersection of 9th and Yuma. So.
No, the breadbasket's not in.
It's behind it, yeah, they're not, there wouldn't be in the district. But that block, our block of Douglas Park, and it was on there because we're the owners, and we have to, there's a, this, there was a study about 10 years ago, if you might recall, a historic district study of Yuma Street and the African-American Heritage District, was recommended to create a historic district. And so there is a desire to build a museum at what is now, it's not a Masonic Lodge, but it's a similar lodge there at the corner, northeast corner of 10th in Yuma. They want to turn that into a museum, an African-American Heritage Museum. And so there's grants and tax credits available for all of that, and so they're asking for this district to be created. We don't believe it's going to have any negative impact on any of our ability to do anything, either with the Rec Center or the rest of our facilities, that we don't envision any changes within our, our parts of those facilities that are in that district. But anyway, that's the item that's planning to come to you.
Always trying to remember all the regulations with those, if that's in the historic district, are we restricted to the areas adjacent to the historic district?
No.
Restrictions?
Just within the district.
Just within. Yeah, I'm skeptical of that.
Okay.
It causes all kinds of grief when somebody tries to develop that.
So that might be something you want to be on in general?
Yeah, maybe.
Okay, maybe, all right.
I think that would be best.
Okay. We'll also have the design contract for the Phase 11 intersection for Kimball and Dennison. So that's the last big project, the big major intersection of Dennison and Kimball. We have some funds set aside for that, it's part of the original sales tax fund. We've got a little over a million and a half there, I think, that's still dedicated to that intersection project. That was part of our original $5 million to MBAF. They only used about, we only used about three and a half to support some of the other improvements around that area. So anyway, that's, that's that particular item that was started. And I think it's projected to bid sometime next year, and then actual construction is anticipated to actually be in '24, isn't it? Yeah, so more to come on that. And the Manhattan Fire Relief Association, this is an item that we wanted to provide some additional information on and get into an official resolution format. There's a, this is a statutory funding that comes from the State Insurance Office, and it, we're just formalizing it a little bit from our end. There's restrictions on how they use to benefit fire personnel and the union members, as well as the association. It's, it's all been done correctly. It's just that we're going to be a little bit more transparent about it and put official resolution in place to guide that development that mirrors what the statute requires, which they've been doing, they, we just haven't done it in that format. Other work sessions coming up. On August 9th, planning on the Housing Authority to propose their, again, Carlson Plaza, you'll hear a little bit about it at the City-County County Meeting, and their, their discussion for the senior and other improvements down in that area along the Carlson Plaza, as well as the Colorado Plaza, that's tied in with that Garden Grove buyout for FEMA, and then our parking lot there at Fifth and Pierre.
What is the city's role? Is this just for our information?
So, no, they're, the, what we visited about last time was that they're requesting use of our parking lot. And the concept was, is that the parking lot could continue to be a parking. And the concept was, is that the parking lot could continue to be a parking lot, but it probably wouldn't be available for, uh, full use because the, the structure, they would build over top of it, uh, and would likely need some of it for, uh, resident use. So, that's the, how we want to, uh, approach that, and whether or not we're interested in partnering or selling or all other options.
Give you a, a more focused idea of what we're looking at, as well as feedback from the community, people we're talking to, and, you know, what we're doing. And then, in October, we'll actually come back for like a memorandum of understanding for the, for the critical use over the parking lot and all that type of stuff, because the authority needs it to go get the financing, they need that agreement with the city. And we will be going on the radio this Thursday and talking about it, so we'll get out, we're meeting with DMI next week, and then we've got the City County coming up.
And then also, I guess, that senior center?
It's a possibility.
It's a possibility, I mean, there, yeah, I mean, there's, that, that's another block that, you know, could be redeveloped potentially in, in a larger scale development at its current location, too. So, I mean, I think there's just some options of whether that works or not with the proposed-
Yeah, there's a whole lot of options possible.
Yeah, I will be at the City County County Meeting next week, so I will listen to the discussion you said on KMA.
Yeah.
It was Thursday.
Alright. Uh, more than likely that open on 8/23 will be there for the, with any additional budget items. That's like, kind of the last input we'll need, so before we publish, uh, for the public hearing.
So were you looking at that 26th, or when are we going to, I mean, we still, we have social services that was way over, you know, original that we need to talk about and figure out, still give the final okay for the alcohol fund. We just talked to the chamber tonight, but I know Usha brought up the idea about using some of the bed tax possibly for the rec centers, and I like that idea. Uh, when are we going to kind of kibbitz and go over that to say, yea, nay, we like those amounts, or we, you know?
So we can do that either on the 26th or on the 23rd as well. Or you could do it at the public hearing night, too. I mean, you'll, you'll have two readings of the budget ordinance for formal consideration. But if you want to publish something different, then-
Well, I was kind of thinking maybe before we go to that one vote, we could really get it figured out ahead of time.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea, because I, I like that idea of, you know, the rec center thing that Usha brought up, too. That, that's a good one.
I was wondering, um, in August, sometimes we have that Tuesday off because school starts, and staff typically have children that may be getting enrolled into back to school night or something. But there's five Tuesdays, so just for planning purposes, um, will be ha, are we counting on having a meeting on that 5th Tuesday? Or, I don't know when school is starting this year, and what, if that falls on a Tuesday for welcome back to school night?
It starts on the 17th.
For Manhattan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And so we weren't planning on having a meeting on the 5th Tuesday, we hadn't, uh, we, we have moved some stuff around because, uh, some staff wouldn't be available the 9th. The ones we have listed, we're confident we can cover. Unless you all, unless you all have plans and plan to be gone.
Jess, I don't, but I just wanted to plan, because sometimes we end up having, not having two meetings-
Right.
-in August, and I just wanted to clarify, you're seeing that we probably will have a meeting on the 9th, but maybe not on the 30th, being the 5th Tuesday.
Correct.
Okay.
And then, uh, planning to bring that housing market analysis strategy and recommendations on the 9th, on the 13th of September. And then, uh, the Chamber inter-region trip would conflict with the 27th. We don't have anything planned right now for that, so if, if there are several of you that want to go on that, and you'd rather than us not have a meeting, that can certainly come about, if that's, that's, uh, that's the desire.
Trip on Monday, Tuesday, then, or what was the days?
Yeah, I think it is on Monday, Tuesday. And as, it was, as was referenced, there's a, there's a lot of meetings coming up on, uh, Scorpion and RTG. So the, uh, in addition to that special city commission that I mentioned on July 26th, the, uh, planning board will first hear their, that item for rezoning on August 15th. And then, uh, we are tentatively planning the first consideration of the development agreement on August 16th. And then we're also, and I, you don't have these in your forms because they're out further, but I was just, I'm just looking here. There could be a potential for another special meeting as we look at, uh, IRBs and first reading of a bond ordinance, and second considerations of development agreements, and second considerations of bond ordinances. We may push that for another special meeting to close that gap a little bit.
But they would be on Tuesdays.
Oh, they would, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
They'd be in conjunction with a work session.
Yeah.
So, okay?
Do you see, um, um, Back 9 and Art and Light District also coming back during the times of Scorpion and such in the next?
Probably not that early, I don't know, Jason, October, November? What do you think for Laramie and 12th and?
All they need to do is come back for final design, so.
Which one?
Uh, both of them. The only action you have left is to approve final design and specs. So, most of them, I don't, it'll be this fall sometime, Usha, but I wouldn't expect it in September.
Okay. Just wondering.
Yeah, those are the only two actions you have left.
That's all I had, Bear.
Um, I noticed that on the housing, um, let's see, let me find it, that you plan to bring it to the commission and, uh, have recommendations also, but there's no real time for the community to have discussion? Is that what you're doing?
No, that, I mean, this is a work session, so-
Uh-huh.
You would have, that's probably one where I would recommend that you would allow public discussion on.
Absolutely.
And so you would also have legislative meetings coming, uh, after that.
I just want to be, I mean, I think the commu, community really bought in to the housing analysis, and I just want to be sure that the community has an opportunity to, uh, and we don't race it through in the five days that it's public.
And I, I think that, that would likely have the steering committee in attendance as well at that, at that particular meeting.
Sure.
Okay, that's all I had.
Okay, at this point, are there other updates? I have some.
I just have one, one question, are we televising?
Yes.
This, is that how we're going to do it from now on?
Yes.
That was kind of the intent.
Everything is going to be televised.
Okay, I just want to be sure, clear on that.
Yeah, just for your scheduling, September 20th and 27th, I'll be attending via Zoom.
I wanted to ask you about, uh, the, the chamber trip to Wichita, Oklahoma, if any of you are interested in going to that.
What was that date again?
September 26th and 27th.
Yeah.
Yes, 26th and 27th.
I'll be in California.
Sorry.
Um, I, I wasn't planning on going.
Laguna Beach, that's pretty good.
I'm not, I'm not interested.
I'll be out of town.
We would have predicted that. I think it'd be sad if no commissioner went. I'm just, I need to think about logistics, so I'll have to let you know whether I can or not. I'll be, um, but that is a, the 27th is a city commission meeting, and-
It's a work session.
A work session.
Which we don't have anything scheduled.
So we're not going to do any, you're not scheduling anything?
Right, and since we didn't have anything.
Oh, this, true.
Anyway.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yep.
Um, and, uh, I would just say that yesterday morning, I participated in the joint Riley County Police Department and Senator Moran's, uh, press conference, press announcement, funding the $440,000 hazardous evidence response team vehicle for RCPD. Uh, it's the, it'll be the only local level hazmat team, um, in the state, it'll be the first. And I would say that probably is, um, happened because of MBAF. It's not just, they don't just go give them away, so think of it in that context.
So I think it's the only law enforcement hazmat unit. Obviously, we have a statewide hazmat response team and fire. But it's a, it's a law enforcement forensic hazmat, as opposed to ours is, kind of covers some of that, but it covers a broader area of hazmat response. A lot of their hazmat's going to be in preserving evidence.
Yeah, that's what is special, that's its focus. The Flint Hills Regional Council yesterday had a press conference and announced that they have received, uh, an award, a grant of $120,000 from the Kaufman Foundation. And, um, uh, today, I joined the Riley County Police Department and the Manhattan Fire Department, Riley County EMS, and USD 383 in their active violence training. And just, it was informative always, it's been a long time since I did that. Uh, last Thursday, I was on a four-person panel at K-State with the Mandela Fellows about how our democracy works, um, and our own individual stories. And many of them are from African countries that have dictators, and they are fascinated by democracy and being able to come to a meeting room like this and, and talk to elected officials, and because they can't even get close to their leader, whoever it is. Yeah. Uh, last week, Ron and I met at the chamber office with the outgoing Garrison Commander, uh, McCanny, and the incoming Garrison Commander, what was his last name?
Foote.
Foote, F-O-O-T-E. And, um, we're off, I mean, we have all new leadership at Fort Riley, so we're in, you know, just rediscovering each other and recognizing each other.
I have the change of-
Yes.
I have the change of command information folder in your mail folders.
Okay.
I don't, I think it'll probably be in the electronic one.
Um, I did, uh, yesterday afternoon, the Flint Hills Regional Council had this meeting in Junction City, so I ended up, uh, reviewing the Parks and Rec meeting, uh, on the city's website this morning, so I was to be informed. And, um, I saw in the paper that the county has estimated damage from the storm, uh, for, uh, and I, um, I'd be interested in the city's total estimate of damage, uh, to infrastructure and services, but even, and I'm not now, but in a month or two, even adding the cost of collecting the debris and just kind of knowing what, what, uh, what all that is costing us, and-
So just a note on that, we didn't have much structural damage, uh, from the storms to city facilities, certainly not like the county did, I don't, I don't, I wasn't aware of that. I don't know if, uh, they're close to meeting the threshold or not, um, for getting a declaration. And we, we certainly are in our final area of the northeast, started that, uh, actually, some of the area to the west of TCB and, and kind of around the Country Club and the area below that, which was hit pretty hard with the tornado. Uh, Thursday and Friday last week, I'm, I'm not optimistic we'll get done by the end of the week. There's, there's a lot out there, so, but we're still working on it, we're keeping track of all that, so that if, by chance, we're eligible for something, that, uh, it'll, obviously, we're burning a lot of extra fuel going back and forth to the transfer station.
You're tying up-
A lot of it's, uh-
A month's worth of staff.
A lot of it's, uh, labor and, and equipment to, to do that, which we could potentially recover some of if we get the declaration. Otherwise, it's, it's not eligible as a standalone item to get to the declaration.
I just think it would be informative for the community to know how much it costs.
And where, which, whose budget is sort of that being paid out of? Is it Public Works or is it Parks or?
Well, the Parks, or the Public Works Department is handling the bulk of the actual pickup. Parks are pretty well engaged with their keeping the, the fields and things mowed, and foresteries engaged in working hazardous trees, from, still from the storm, that are higher priority than picking up. As they get some cut, catch-up, there's some certain locations that we need the knuckle boom, uh, which loads the big logs to, to reach across the ditch or other places that are hard for the skid loaders to get to, to load some of those. So we'll be, we'll be going back to some areas that our skid loaders couldn't get, and it's too much to do by hand, and look at where there's logs too big to have our grapple, uh, knuckle boom loader load that.
I appreciate those maps that the city put out with updates, you know, we had the areas, because you had in the bottom part of that information, because it showed fuel, use, gas, diesel, man-hours, and, uh, quite astronomical, so, so, you know, that, that's good information to put out there. I think a lot of people appreciated seeing that, because it sort of, when you see those numbers, it hits you between the eyes as to just how difficult and how, how much, uh, work was being done there.
And a lot of appreciation I've gotten, lots of calls, more calls thanking us than calls, "When are you getting here?"
I just think everybody knew we had to be patient, and as a matter of fact, the debris just disappeared from my lawn today. I'm in Northview and we're the very last, and I think there may be some, a few Northview streets left, but, um, I knew the grass would be dead under- Yeah, exactly. So I appreciate, I'm glad they finally came, great. Other comments?
No, no major comments, I think you've answered my questions I was going to ask about a cleanup update, and you've already answered that. I do have an MPO meeting next Wednesday, so I'll report back on if we have a new director or not, and see where we are in the hiring process. Other than that, not much, much more. I think, um, I watched, um, part of the Parks and Rec meeting last night. I think Wyatt did a really nice job of explaining, and I'm looking forward to the meeting on the 18th. And I would also like to know at some point, um, where we are with the, with, with pools mainly, uh, and how that's going, because a lot of other communities are closing down their pools. And I know that's been a topic of discussion in the past, uh, but I think we need to, each time you, we put something out, there needs to be that analysis, like you did with the cleanup commu, cleanup crew for, for the trees and limbs, staff time and how much impact it has, and what it means in financial, budgetary aspects, because none of it, none of these things are free. And we talk about cost recovery, what does that mean? It can mean a variety of things in the community, and so I think those are terms we need to define as we look forward to the July 17th meeting, uh, July 18th meeting, and hopefully, a lot of people will be there, and I'm glad Mike Mattson is going to be facilitating, too.
You, you should just, or give you a little bit of feedback on the pools. A lot of credit really goes to Sydney Baker. She's our rec supervisor who has hired over a hundred seasonal staff and has managed them in a way to keep all our pools open and operating and safe. She is a true credit to the organization and the community. She's the type of person we want, she's the type of person that, you know, we're very proud to have within our organization, and she manages a tremendous amount of resources to deliver that product. She works on the pools 12 months a year, and she is, again, just the type of person we want to have on our team delivering those services.
I agree with you, Jason, I think that's what needs to be out there.
Yep, absolutely.
Because there might be this assumption, like there's a whole, I don't know, 100 staff members working on all of these things, and like you said, it could be just a one-person job who's doing all of this as far as, you know, a smaller staff, but managing it. I don't, I think there's an assumption that things just happen.
Yeah, no, I'm, just a credit to her to work through our internal processes. There's a lot of people out there casting stones towards HR and the process it takes to hire someone. She worked over 100 people through that process in a timely manner, staffed it up, opened on time, and continues to operate in an effective manner. She's a highly motivated individual who works well for the city. Those are the type of people we want to continue to recruit and retain.
I agree with you, thank you.
You know, I want to e-echo that, because we haven't got any complaints, I haven't anyway, on, on any of the pool programs or summer programs. I've gotten, a lot of people said, "Hey, they're going great," and I find that interesting, because it's sort of a, you know, doesn't fit with the narrative that we've got a serious problem in Parks and Recs, so I appreciate that update, and I, and I think those programs are going just outstanding. I understand Ogden had to close their pool.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, so that, that, that shows the contrast, we're doing a lot better.
What was her first name?
Sydney.
Sydney Baker.
And, you know, it is, she has done an incredible job, but at the same time, as we get towards the end of July and August, we have people that want to go back to school. So we'll always have that issue of, okay, we kill, still keep three pools open, um, and, you know, that's when our cost recovery, we don't have a lot of- you know, that's when our cost recovery, we don't have a lot of new cash users, they're using their season passes and milking it for all they can, and, and we have less guard, so we may shift things around a little bit if staffing requires us to do that, but I guarantee you, she'll work hard to keep them all open if she can.
Oh, I did, I did just have one question, we talk about parks, the arts and the parks, and Wyatt presented last night, who is funding that? Is that, is that the city, or is it the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation?
So we are primarily funding it, and it, it does primarily come out of our funds. We have had sponsorship support, and I think we probably still have a little bit of sponsorship support this year, obviously with some of our reduced staffing, that we, that's something we haven't got a lot of, that's something Vern and I talked about with the foundation, about, you know, our, our recreation folks, our, our recreation providers, they're not really experts in soliciting donors, nor do, nor do cities, nor do people really like to give to the city. So we talked about a strategy where, as we identify programs and projects that they might fundraise for, letting their fundraisers make that ask of sponsors, as opposed to our people, so...
I agree with that, I think it's imperative that the community, like I said, that was a really good presentation that Wyatt did, that every other, almost every Tuesday, we have the municipal band, and then on Fridays, we have a show, and all of that is free to the public, but nothing's really free, so it's somebody's hiring and making sure everything's going well with the lighting or the sound or whatever it might be setup, getting those people here, getting them to, you know, providing them whatever they need. So I think that's, I, I'm very proud of our Arts and Parks, Arts in the Parks program, so...
Thank you.
If we're finished?
I move that we adjourn.
Will we still do that?
A second.
We have a motion.
Roll call.
Aye. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, again.
Nobody to record it, but...